City of Salem, January 25, 2024. A regular meeting of the City Council was held in person on Thursday, January 25, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on January 23, 2024, at 11:01 a.m. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselor is absent, Counselor Watson felt. Counselor President Hapworth presided. Counselor Harvey moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. President Hapworth requested that everyone please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Varela.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Salem City Council honors this land as Namkeg or fishing place where generations of Namkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries. We acknowledge this is unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe will continue to honor and hold this land into the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing meaningful dialogue with indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle the legacies of oppression and inequities that persist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. Public testimony is not a public hearing or question and answer period. Signing must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting. The President shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes, which each individual presenting testimony must abide. We have two people signed up today, so each will get three minutes. First up, I believe in person is Alex Rice.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to set a timer, so I try and stick to the time limit here. Good evening, City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Alex Rice. I live at 99 Mason Street. I'm a Salem resident. I'm here to speak about the STR ordinance, the details that was recently kindly shared by my Counselor Meg. And I specifically wanted to share my thoughts on the proposed unit limitations. So I live in a two-family that I own or occupy in Salem. I Airbnb the other unit that I have gone through the permitting process for. And for the first time in this October, I also left for a few weeks, got out of Dodge, and Airbnb my own unit. So I have one unit full-time and another unit that I do part of the year. I have a small real estate business that's just myself, and one of my goals has been to get a larger property, to be able to participate in the tourism economy. And one of the main ways that I could afford that would be to Airbnb the other units. I would ask that the Council consider increasing that unit count. One suggestion that I discussed with Meg was four units. As people probably know, generally up to four units is still residential property. You can get an FHA loan, you can get a VA loan, so that people like myself that are locals that want to participate in the tourism economy that we have here are able to do so without those limitations. I do understand that part of the goal of this is probably to keep outside developers that have no local interests, that are just coming here to profit, to minimize the impact of that, which I totally agree with. So I do understand the goal of further limiting it, also probably increasing enforcement, all of those things I am very much in favor of. What I do think is that limiting people that do live here, that are following the rules, that just want to participate in the economy, that the Council consider that. I think one of the other arguments that probably comes to mind is that, you know, many units are being taken off the rental market and the need to increase low and moderate income housing, which I am also very much in favor of. I do think the impact of this, as far as either of those goals, is little to none. So if the Council does want to impose those limits, I just would be curious to what the goal is and what the data is to support those versus just saying, you know, Airbnbs are this monster in Salem, they're the boogeyman, it's an easy thing to attack. We're going to further limit it. So those are my thoughts on it. And again, I am certainly in favor in trying to control and regulate and restrict it. I would just hope that it's also in a way that allows people that are trying to honestly follow the rules like myself to be able to do so. I appreciate the Council hearing me out on that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex.
It stayed under three minutes.
Jessica Estes.
Thank you so much for giving me the time to speak here. I'm in a similar sentiment to Alex, who just spoke.
Jessica, would you mind saying your name and address for the record?
Yep. My name is Jessica Estes. I live at 19 Pleasant Street. So I am a Salem resident. I live in a five-unit multifamily property that I purchased in December. And I recently left my day job with the plan to Airbnb the other units as a full-time small business. I understand the need for STR limits. However, I'm asking that any limit on the number of units be higher, as I feel that the proposed limitations unfairly penalize locals from participating in the tourism economy. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hearings.
We have an order from National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole 400 feet northeast of the central line of the intersection of Pope and Proctor Street.
The petition by National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole 400 feet northeast of the center line and the intersection of Pope and Proctor Street. Anyone appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium and use the raise hand function on Zoom.
Sabita Mahaber Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. Will be pulling this petition at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the Council on this? Okay. Thank you, Sabita. Anyone appearing in opposition? It's being withdrawn either way. Further hearings.
We have an order from National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole 142 feet west of the central line of the intersection of Harbor Street and Congress Street.
Petition by National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole 142 feet west of the intersection of Harbor and Congress Streets. Anyone appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium or use the raise hand function on Zoom.
Sabita Mahaber Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is to install a pole for grid monitoring.
Anyone else appearing in favor? Anyone appearing opposed, please use the raise hand function or make your way to the Any further questions or comments from the Council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to close the public hearing. I saw no pole obstructions at 65 Harbor Street. I spoke with Ms. Sabina about it. I move that the matter be granted.
Before we move on to that motion, any further questions or comments from the Council? Counselor Jerslow moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor? All opposed? The matter carries. Counselor Jerslow.
I move that the matter be granted.
Counselor Jerslow moves to grant the petition by National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole 142 feet west of the intersection of Harbor and Congress Streets Any further discussion? We don't need to second the motion on this one. No, thank you. On the motion by Counselor Jerslow to grant the petition by National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole 142 feet west of the intersection of Harbor and Congress Streets, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sabita. Appointments and reappointments.
We have held from the last meeting. The mayor's reappointments are the following: two people with their terms to expire.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counselor Varela moves for confirmation by roll call vote under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So we have two candidates here tonight. We have Mr. Timothy Norton of 9 Glover Street, as well as Margarita Raca Gonzales, I'm sorry if I mess that up, from 16 Kusuko Road. And we have Mr. Norton, who is going for the Scholarship and Education Committee. I had the pleasure to talk to Mr. Norton yesterday. And a little snippet about Mr. Norton. He's a Cambridge Fire, works for the Cambridge Fire Department. He's also part of the Massachusetts National Guard since 2010 as a bomb squad officer, as well as an SSU graduate. And the reason that Mr. Norton wanted to get involved is, you know, when he was growing up, he really didn't have a way for pay for college. He had to utilize the GI Bill. And Mr. Norton really wants to engage with the Scholarship and Education Fund to really not only look at bolstering the fund, but look to help residents really identify and give us some help as well. And then we also have Ms. Margarita, who is a family law attorney and is originally from Portugal, and a husband from Bali. And after speaking with Margarita, I was very impressed about how your diligence with your research and your just insight and your passion with really wanting to engage with the Historical Commission. So look forward to seeing you both serve. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the reappointment of Timothy Norton to the Scholarship and Education Committee and Margarita Raca Gonzales to Historic Commission, we have, I'm sorry. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Marcelo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt, I'm sorry, and Counselor Hapworth.
On the reappointment of Timothy Norton to the Scholarship and Education Committee and Margarita Raca Gonzales to the Historic Commission, we have 10 members voting, 10 in favor and none opposed. The matter carries. Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I'd like to suspend the rules to allow Timothy and Margarita to speak if they so choose.
Counselor Varela moves to suspend the rules, seeing no objection.
Good evening. Excuse me. It's with great honor that I take this position. My husband and I chose to move to Salem very specifically, and then we chose to not be in a brand-new condo and buy a historic house full of character and full of issues. But we love it, and we couldn't ask for anything greater. And so we're so committed to this community and its history, and it's with great honor that I take this position. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. First and foremost, I want to thank the Council and Mayor Pangalo for granting me the opportunity to serve in this capacity. The committee that you guys have appointed me to manages two funds. The Education Fund, which provides supplemental funding for local educational needs or existing adult literacy programs, and the Scholarship Fund, which provides financial aid to deserving city residents. Both of these funds are entirely financed by either charitable donations or voluntary additions to tax bills done here by residents in the city of Salem or from businesses. For more information on the Scholarship and Education Fund or to elect to donate to the fund, please visit the city of Salem website or contact members of the committee to learn more. Lastly, I want to thank members of the committee, past and present, for their efforts. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you both, and thank you, Timothy, for your service. Is that air assault on your lapel there?
EOD.
Further appointments and reappointments. Counselor Varela. I'm sorry. Further appointments, reappointments. Madam City Clerk.
We have the mayor's appointments are the following with their term to expire. Ellen Simpson and Hannah Osthoff for the Zoning Board of Appeals, September 15, 2024, May 1, 2026, and Paul Carson to the Bicycle Initiative Path Committee for February 14, 2025.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that this be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela moves this be held under the rules. All those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's reappointment of the following list of city employees with their terms to expire.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Varela moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I'd like to move that we confirm the appointments listed.
Counselor Varela moves for confirmation by roll call vote under discussion.
No discussion. Happy to see we have a lot of continuity with our employees and looking forward to the administration doing the good work that they do.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I just want to mention that this appointment is the first time that Ray Joden is officially Director of DPS, and he's done a great job.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? I'm sorry. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to point out that Ms. Vula Arfanos as well is listed here. Congratulations to both of them. And also Ms. Deb Duhamel, new city engineer. So this is the first time their names are in front of us in this manner, as well as I believe is also Justin McCutcheon. Is that one, was that in front of us last year? But anyway, I just want to say thank you to all of the employees for their continued commitment to the city and service that they provide, and I'm very excited to see these names listed. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Varela.
I'd like just to add, I think we need to move for roll call vote, correct?
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Matter of the mayor's reappointment of the several city employees. We have 10 members voting, 10 in favor, none opposed. The matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's appointments of Elizabeth Mari and Leanne Lefwitch to the Design Review Board, and this is for informational purposes only.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that this be received and filed.
Counselor Varela moves this be received and filed. All those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Prozynski.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that, Counselor moved to page 15 to allow a request by Scout Colin Powell to address the Council about the project, this Eagle Scout project that is being planned in the near future.
Counselor Prozynski moves to suspend the rules to, seeing no objection.
Go to page 15 and I'll read it. Just suspend to go to page 15 and then I'll read that.
To page 15, to petitions.
We have a request from Scout Colin Baucher for his Eagle Scout project to move the existing memorial Benjamin Pierce at the Rotary of the Old Church Street and St. Peter Street to the Center Island on Church Street alongside a new plaque dedicated to Major General Stephen Abbott.
Counselor Prozynski.
Thank you. The current memorial is on Church Street.
Counselor Prozynski, would you make a motion first?
Yes, I move that this motion be granted.
Counselor Prozynski moves this be granted, under discussion.
The Benjamin Pierce Memorial, which is now currently located on Church Street, is actually adjacent to the parking lot. It's on a stone that's flat. It's really, doesn't do the proper respect to one of Salem's heroes, and it's stepped on and covered with snow. And I tip my hat to Scout Colin Baucher for submitting this as an Eagle Scout project and bringing it to the honorary position that it should be. So I would also like to suspend the rules and ask Scout Colin Baucher to address the Council and explain his Eagle Scout project to us.
Counselor Prozynski moves to suspend the rules, seeing no objection.
My name is Colin Baucher. I live on 41 Forrester Street here in Salem. Before I start, can I pass these? So I've lived in the city of Salem my entire life, and I've been in Boy Scouts.
Okay. The people in the audience can't use the microphone. You have to have the microphone.
Can you do that up here, Jeff?
I have been in Scouts for the past seven years as a member of Salem Troop 24. During that time, I first participated in many community service projects, both in and out of Salem. Also during my time in Scouts, I've gradually risen up the ranks, always with the intention of attaining Eagle Scout. One of the most important requirements in the Eagle Scout project, in getting the Eagle Scout, is the Eagle Scout project. So what I am proposing for is the creation of a new memorial to be replacing the old one. I have already discussed with Kim Everling of the Salem Veterans Council. The overall idea has gained approval. To that end, I and the members of the Salem Veterans Council would like your approval in moving the existing memorial of Benjamin Pierce at the Rotary of Church Street and St. Peter Street to a nearby and more visible space owned by the city and combining it with a new memorial that will be placed in the Center Island next to the pathway that intersects the Rotary.
Thank you, Colin. Any questions for Colin while he's up there? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Colin, for your presentation. It was able to answer a few questions that I had, and I'm not sure if you might be able to answer these for me, or perhaps the Council President or even the City Clerk. But I appreciate the work and the effort put into this. It's always nice to see our respect and honoring our past historical figures that we have within the city. I walked, I happened to park right next to the current marker this morning, so I was able to look at it, and it just peeked a few questions in my mind. One of them was on the picture that you sent over, so I think I'll start maybe with my questions that you could probably answer, and then I have a few questions that are more city questions. The historical marker that currently exists has Historic Salem Inc. on it, so I'm curious if you've had any conversations with them, because I'm assuming they were the ones that originally put that marker in. So I'm just wondering if the conversation has occurred with Historic Salem Inc. about moving their marker or something that they might have had to do with the original installation of their marker. And then you also mentioned approval, so because of the location of this, I'm wondering if this went through the SRA for discussion.
Yeah, so we went through the SRA last month, and we've talked with the Historic Inc. of Salem to make sure that they're okay with this. And they see, obviously, as well that this is not doing the current respects, so they support the project as well.
That's great. So did the SRA have any feedback for you? Or was it, was it just, okay?
No, it was pretty fun.
And my other question was, what would the new plaque say? But I see that that's right here, so that's great. I was curious as to what the information on there was. And then I just, I'm really curious about, one question which might need to be answered by the city of, why is this in front of Council? I don't ever remember approving a historical plaque before, so I didn't know if there was any sort of reason or motion as to why this was specifically in front of us. Is it because of the location or city property? But those are all of them.
I believe it came before the Council, whenever it was placed before, so moving it would require a Council order or Council approval.
So, okay, because it's a war monument? Is that, we're not sure. Okay. So that's, I guess, just a question as to why. And then the location was kind of really, really stuck on me a little. I would love all of our markers to be in much more prominent, better locations. I'm curious, I like that you noted that the location was chosen for, I think you said proper respect in moving it, so people can actually stop and see it, but it's the middle of the street. I don't, that makes me a little nervous. Like, I know it's an island, but you have to cross the street to get to it, and it just reminded me of visiting London this past winter, and there was a war monument for women, and it was in the middle of the street, and you literally couldn't get to it without crossing the road, and it was very dangerous, and I actually didn't go up and get to it. And it just doesn't seem like, I'm curious about the thought and the conversation that went into the location design. And then that kind of peaked broader questions for me, which I don't want to go out of scope, which is why I was maybe thinking we could go to committee for discussion, or I can put in a separate order for committee for discussion, but how are these locations chosen for plaques and monuments? Does our planning department include it? Why is this not put within our yellow historical trail that we have going throughout the city? So people are aware of it, not just something that you're stumbling upon when you're crossing the street. So I have a lot of kind of broader questions when it comes to location and conversation around that, but I just, it feels weird to me to be putting a marker in a place that's primarily for vehicles that people are crossing through. So I don't want to put you on the spot, because I know that's a very big loaded question. So I would throw it out there that maybe we could send this to committee for further conversation. I would love to have this conversation, because I really do feel that the respect is needed for proper location. And I don't know if other locations were considered or discussed. Like, I just don't know any of the backstory, and I don't want to put, you know, anyone on the spot here tonight. So I'll stop at that.
Any further discussion?
Can I answer that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, well, regardless of if it's a good spot or not, there already is a historical, I don't know, there's things to, a sign, yes, a historical sign on the other side, a lot more to read than this. It's not in the street. It's, there's a island, and a crosswalk goes through the island, so there's no way a vehicle could get close to that. The placement of it was simply just that it was close by, and it seemed like a place where a lot of people walk through, a lot of people are going to see it. It was chosen also because of the sign on the left side. We thought, you walk on the left, you see something. You walk on the right, you see something. That just made sense. Does that answer or help at all?
Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, no, I appreciate that. It just, it brings up a lot more questions in my mind with that answer, which is why I think a discussion would be great. The Council just last year approved a very large amount for a traffic study here that was going to review our parking locations in the downtown. I know that the Church Street law is something that's always up for discussion and conversation, so I don't know if that island is necessarily always going to be there. Like, it's just, it seems kind of a, to move it there, to then possibly move it again, and we know how difficult it is to move things in this city. So I think a location conversation to really make sure we can get proper respect or fully vet out reasons as to why the location makes sense. I think I did hear somewhere that there was some connection with the church or the cemetery in the church, which is great, so I understand wanting to be in that general area. But again, I just, I feel like location alternatives, and also just the broader question of how are these chosen within the city, especially ones that require placement of an object in the ground that people want to focus around.
Counselor Marcelo.
Thank you, President. I would first like to second the motion to send this to committee.
The motion on the floor from Counselor Prozynski right now.
But she made a motion to send it to committee, which supersedes it.
There's a, is that correct? I haven't, sorry. Okay.
So in my reasoning is, I had a conversation earlier with Mr. Everling, and I had the same kinds of questions of, I applaud making it more visible. It has to be more visible. I didn't even know it was there, to tell you the truth. My concern is when tour groups or groups of people are walking through that walkway and somebody stops to read it, now it's going to back everybody up, and they're going to be in the street. And that's my concern of putting it in the middle of a road. And so, you know, we're trying to make things safer for pedestrians, and so I'm just wondering if the location is appropriate. And I know we want to keep it in that area because of the connection to St. Peter's Church, and I get that. I'm just wondering if maybe we could have a larger discussion on where exactly it should go to make it safe for everybody to go and see it and be more respectful of the actual monument. But...
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. And also thank you, really, for taking this on, showing more respect and getting more visibility for that. I think that's commendable and more than appropriate. I think it's wonderful. And I do also appreciate, you know, my colleagues wanting to get in the best location possible. But I had a question on if sending it to committee has any kind of effect, if you need to adhere to any kind of timeline? Like, is it problematic to have it go to committee, which would take more time and discussion? Like, I don't know, you know, what funding... Like, I don't know, you know, what funding might be involved, or if you have any markers you have to adhere to. So I just didn't, I was just wondering if you could let us know what that would mean for you, and if it has any negative impact if it did go to committee. Thank you.
Well, it's a good question. I don't know how long those things take, but as far as the project for us, we are on time to get it done by April 13th, which is the first muster. Does that sound, again, I don't know how long going through another committee would take, because I've never done that.
Counsel Prozniewski.
Mr. Bakker, how much time have you got before you age out? And you can no longer age out before you're an Eagle Scout? Because the reason I'm asking that question is, I'm not sure how long this will take, but I know that there's a, after your project is completed, you have to go through another process called the Board of Review, which is, again, another lengthy process. And there's a certain time limit in which you age out of Boy Scouts, and you're no longer going to be able to affect, effectively become an Eagle Scout if you age out of Boy Scouts. So my question to you is, how long is it going to be before you age out? So that if this does have to be pushed along, we can guarantee that we can help you not put a stumbling block in your pursuit of being an Eagle.
I thank you for that a lot. So I have six months, my birthday is on June 13th. Another thing, the Board of Review, a lot of the extra stuff that is done after the project has been changed recently, so that it can be done a little bit after my birthday. So not everything has to be completely wrapped up by then, but definitely this project should be done, and we're really aiming to get it done by April 13th.
Thank you.
Counsel Verla.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I think that, you know, I think some questions have been raised that, for safety and vehicular safety and pedestrian safety, and I think it would be appropriate to send this to committee. I'm assuming it would potentially go to Government Services Committee, which I do chair, and if that's the case, I would make sure to work with you to make sure to have a meeting that would accommodate your schedule as quickly as we can to get through this process. So look forward to working with you, if that's the will of the body, to make this happen sooner than later. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. First of all, really diligent work and excellent testimony in front of the council. Perhaps you'll consider running for council someday. I think if this is expedited to the committee, it would be fine. Just one interesting thing to Counsel Stott, the way things are going with our climate, we don't really know where anything might be in the future. And roads are, you know, parks, you know, we've just seen that it doesn't take a large storm to create major consequences, and this is a real change in the way the climate is. But I really just want to congratulate you on your really good efforts.
Any further discussion? Counsel Prozniewski.
If we do send it to committee, I just request that this be expediated very quickly. Mr. Bakker's spent seven years working towards this goal, and I'd hate to see something like this get caught up in red tape and long discussion, and because of politics, not him being able to achieve what he's been working for for so long. Thank you.
Motion by Counsel Stott? Counsel Stott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say thank you to Colin, and to ask if you already earned your government badge, because you might be able to do a two-for-one here with doing these committee meetings. So I definitely appreciate your allowing us to do our diligence in this matter and having a thorough conversation, and it just will be an additional insight into the city government. So thank you for your work, and I agree and appreciate Chair Verla's willingness to expedite.
Counsel Verla.
Thank you. We'll keep it brief. I'd like to recommend this be co-posted as well.
So Counsel Stott, do you accept that? Counsel Stott's motion that we refer to the matter to the Government Services, co-post it with the committee of the whole, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Thank you, Colin. Go back and, sorry, Counsel Prozniewski, if you want to send us back. Back to page eight. I think we need a motion for that, right?
I move that we return to page eight of the agenda, please.
Counsel Prozniewski moves to return to page eight, seeing no objection. Communications from the mayor.
We've in order to accept the donation tolling $1,000 from Janos Bistro. The donation is to be deposited into the Salem Education Fund.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I would like to say thank you to Janos Bistro for their donation, and I'd also like to mention that they are more commonly known in our community as Fantasy Island on Loring Avenue.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the order to accept the donation of $1,000 from Janos Bistro, and that the donation be deposited into the Salem Education Fund, 8305, in accordance with the recommendation of his honor of the mayor, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have a resolution in support of roadway safety legislation.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. Whereas legislation pending in the Massachusetts House and Senate, H. 3393, would enable municipalities to utilize automated traffic enforcement, ensuring more consistent enforcement of traffic safety laws to protect the lives of children and other residents of the Commonwealth. And whereas the City Council of Salem, the City of Salem City Council and Mayor unanimously approved the submission of a home rule petition to the state legislature on September 14th, 2023, for a special act authorizing the automated enforcement of traffic violations, and that legislation, HD 4600, is currently pending at the State House. And whereas the Salem Public School bus drivers have provided powerful qualitative input to the district and the city about the increasing prevalence of drivers passing stopped school buses with stop signs activated, and whereas a pilot program for automated enforcement of school bus stop signs found 850 violations took place in just five weeks, an average of more than three violations per bus per day. And whereas a study by the Insurance Institute of Highway Safety has found that automated enforcement reduces the number of fatal red light running crashes by 21%, and of all types of fatal crashes, has signaledized intersections by 14%. And whereas a majority of American states allow some form of automated enforcement, and the technology is currently in use in approximately 350 American communities already, and now therefore be it resolved that the City of Salem strongly urges the Massachusetts Legislature to advance H. 3393 and HD 4600 favorably out of committee and before the full legislature for approval this session, and that a copy of this resolution be transmitted by the city clerk to the chairs and members of the state legislature's Joint Committee on Transportation, the Speaker, and the Massachusetts House of Representatives, the President of the State Senate, State Senator Joan Lovely, State Representative Manny Cruz, and Governor Moira Healy. And I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counsel Murcillo moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President. So we are at the point in the legislative session where bills need to move out of committee in order to get some sort of action in this session. And the two years always seems to fly by, and it's frustrating at the local level to send in home rule petitions and see them languish. And so this is kind of a final push, much like the letter that was sent in support of the condo conversion home rule petition, to get some movement out of the committee. Currently, the first bill, the first bill in here, H. 3393, is in the Transportation Committee. They've had their public comment, and so, like I said, we're just trying to get some movement and support to move it along. There are several bills about, that are specifically about allowing video enforcement cameras on school buses, and that the plan is to then merge that into H. 3393 to come out with one overall bill for video enforcement of traffic. I will say that I have talked to the police chief here, they are fully in favor of it. The Lieutenant Tucker from the Traffic Division is fully in favor of this. The superintendent is fully in favor of this. And so I will also say that if this does pass tonight, we also want to hold this for a cover letter, which will be signed by all of those people to kind of further bring some attention to this issue. The, you know, video enforcement, either red light or speed, or both, is already allowed in 30 states. It's very successful. It's been done before. This bill has been in the legislature for years. Our home rule petition that we sent in this year is the same one that we sent in the last session last year, two years ago. And then it was sent in a couple of years before that. So I think what I'm trying to do with the mayor, with the superintendent, with the police chief, is to try to underscore the fact that municipalities want this, that we need some help in enforcing traffic violations in our city, and that we cannot possibly afford to put a police officer on every street and every intersection throughout the city every day. And so we need help. And so I hope that I can get approval from everyone on the council tonight to get this moved on to the legislature.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth, and thank you, Counsel Murcillo. This is the third home rule petition that has passed this body unanimously and has gotten stuck in the legislature. And, you know, the first one was two years ago, fossil fuel. We were only trying to be enabled to be part of the 10-community pilot program. And we got a docket number, and that's as far as it went. We're in the third year for the condo conversion, and in my mind, this is a real failure by our state government and the home rule petition process, that some state senator from Florida, Mass, or Medfield, or someplace that really doesn't know what goes on in our community, are making decisions that are either not allowing us to act, or even not allowing us to deliberate on an issue. And my feeling, my personal feeling, is that the city council, just like any other city council, is the body that sets the policy for the community, and we represent the community. People in Springfield don't represent the community, you know, or Martha's Vineyard for the people in Salem, we do. And for something to get stuck with the lack of transparency of the legislature, we don't always know even where it is at any particular time, is outrageous. So I really appreciate what Counsel Murcillo is doing. With the condo conversion last year, Rep. Cruz, Felipe Zambolini, and I testified in front of the Senate and the House. I've called the heads of the committees, you know, that had the condo conversion bill in them, and, you know, they listen, they nod their head, and then they do whatever they do. And unlike this body, where the Salem News and the people on SATV can see what we do at any moment, the acts of our legislature are completely non-transparent. We don't know where something sits until someone tells us, because we asked for it. Thank you.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Yes, I'm also really happy to see this come into the council. I hear constantly, and I know other counselors do too, from residents, their frustration, you know, with the traffic violations, and their plea for more traffic enforcement. And as Counseler Murcillo had said, we can't put someone on every corner. And I fully support this and appreciate people's frustrations, and thank you, thank you for bringing this in.
Any further discussion? Counsel Prozniewski.
Thank you. I think it's been more than 10 years that the Salem Police Department has been advocating for this, maybe even longer, it could be as much as 20 years. I know that the state of Massachusetts has constantly shot down municipalities' abilities to put electronic surveillance in their towns. I think it was a matter of civil rights discussions that were done at that time, Massachusetts being, you know, a more liberal area than other parts of the country. The data shows that in other parts of the country, that violations have decreased dramatically where electronic surveillance has been put in. And I don't think anybody would argue that there was intersections in this city that are very dangerous and congested, where an electronic eye would absolutely add, not only to the safety of it, but also to relieving some of the congestion that's caused by it. Personally, I believe that it's probably the most single, most effective tool that we can have in this city, and I would, and I also believe that the mass chiefs of police, which is statewide, has joined on advocating to have this put forward. So again, I would urge our state government to seriously think about this, if they have any concern, if they have any interest in the safety of our people. Thank you.
Counsel Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am in full support of this resolution. I am not happy to see it in front of us again, because that just means, here we are again, asking the state to do the work that we're asking them to do. So it's frustrating on that level, but it is great to hear that it sounds like we have, you know, full support from so many in the city. It's astonishing that that pilot program of 850 violations for the school bus stops in just five weeks, I believe that was in the neighboring city of Peabody, and that was spearheaded after a child was hit. And we do not, we do not want that to happen here, and we are just continuing to wait. I feel like, as the parent of a child that gets off of a school bus and has to cross North Street every day, before the redesign of North Street, buses or cars were literally going around a stopped school bus to pass it. It's ridiculous, the mentality of some of the drivers in the city. So knowing that there could be additional enforcement that would make that driver stop and think, unfortunately, you know, you would think, going around a school bus, the driver would stop and think, but to know that sometimes we just need that additional enforcement, and I really, really, really hope I don't see this again, and our state takes action.
Any further discussion? Counsel Harvey.
Yeah, I also support it, but I do have a question in regards to, they're talking about putting the cameras on the buses, is that, am I wrong in saying that? I mean, because my wife is a school bus driver, and I hear about it constantly, that people blow that stop sign. So I guess the reason I'm asking that question is because, you know, everybody's talking about intersections, but school buses don't always stop at an intersection. So I just wanted to clarify that the—
Counsel Murcillo. I'm sorry, Counsel Harvey.
I was just wanting to clarify that they are, but the other issue I would bring up is, who's going to monitor these cameras that go on the buses? Because I know they do have cameras on the buses now for the kids, if they act up, but I can't tell you how many times she'll come home and say, "My camera's not working again." So it's just, just a couple of questions in regards to it. I'm in full support of it, and then my next question would be, if the state does pass it, does the municipality have some sort of say in where we use it and how we use it, or is it state mandated?
Counsel Murcillo.
Those are great questions. Let me see if I can go back. So the video enforcement on a school bus, from what I understand, would be automatic enforcement. So a car goes by, the school bus driver doesn't do anything, it's automatically sent to the owner of the vehicle. Whether those cameras work or not, that would be in conjunction with the police department, because this would be through the police department that these things would be done. Once this law is passed, it depends on what version comes out of the state legislature. The version of the bill for school buses, it's not really clear yet how many, it would probably be a certain number per municipality that you're allowed to have. I think they want to start slowly, right? For video enforcement of speeding and red light violations, the current text, I believe, says you can have one camera for every 25,000 residents in your city. So they want to start small. So, and then you also have to provide all sorts of data, and just to show if it's working, how it's working. Our home rule petition that we put in for video enforcement around schools— Our home rule petition that we put in for video enforcement around school zones was very specific about where the cameras could be placed, how many we can have here, how the video is handled once it's, once the camera is, once the cameras are collecting all this information, how long it can be held, if there is an appeal on a ticket that's sent, how that video segment is stored and for how long, and who's in charge of it. And by the way, I will also say that specific in that home rule petition, all the money that comes in from violation fines for speed enforcement around school zones in our home rule petition, all that money would go back into education for drivers. So it's not used to boost the coffers of the city. It's meant to go back in for training and making people understand why it's important to obey speed limits and to stop for school buses, for instance. And there was also discussion about driver's ed in high schools also. So, but it wasn't, it's meant to go back into driver safety. I hope that answers it. It's kind of not clear how exactly it would be handled because it depends on what's passed by the legislature.
Any further discussion? On the adoption of the resolution in support of the roadway safety legislation, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
Counsel Davis.
Yes.
Counsel Harvey.
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow.
Yes.
Counsel Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel Murcillo.
Yes.
Counsel Proznowski.
Yes.
Counsel Stott.
Yes.
Counsel Varela.
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth.
Yes. Adoption of the resolution in support of the roadway safety legislation. We have 10 members voting, 10 in the affirmative. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor? Counsel Proznowski.
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to, oh, sorry. We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to short-term rentals.
Let the record show that Counselors Hapworth and Cohen have recused themselves from the discussions on these next few communications from the mayor. Further communications, Madam Clerk?
So again, we have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to short-term rentals.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Murcillo moves that this be referred to Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, under discussion?
Thank you, President. I applaud these changes to the short-term rental, but I want to send this and the following orders to committee to have a better discussion and understand, I guess, all of the different parts to it and the reasoning behind it.
Any further discussion? Seeing that there's no more discussion, Counsel Murcillo's moved to refer this to the Committee of Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor?
Co-posted.
All those opposed? So voted. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to certificates of fines.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Under discussion?
Thank you. Same as before, just to understand the short-term rental issues that are being solved here.
Counsel Murcillo moves that the amendment of ordinances relative to certificates of fitness be sent to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? All those opposed? So voted. Further orders?
We have an order that the City of Salem hereby accepts Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40U authorizing the city to impose and collect fines for a variety of code and ordinance violations using a non-judicial administrative process.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move this be, that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Murcillo moves that this be co-posted, this be moved to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any further discussion?
No.
A motion to adopt Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40U authorizing the city to impose and collect fines and fees in a variety of code and ordinances violations to be moved to Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? All those opposed? So moved. No. Counselor Hapworth. Counselor Hapworth.
Mayor's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Are there any motions, orders, or resolutions? Seeing none. Committee reports. Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, January 25, 2025. The Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of granting of certain licenses, secondhand valuables, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All opposed? The report is accepted. Counsel Murcillo.
On adoption of the recommendation?
Yes.
Yep. No comment, just that they be granted?
Any discussion? On the motion that we grant certain licenses for secondhand valuables, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem and City Council, January 25, 2024. The Committee on Public Health Safety and Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of opting into the specialized opting code, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All opposed? Report is accepted. Counsel Cohen.
On adoption of the recommendation, January 16 was our second hearing. All members of the committee and four other counselors were in attendance. Neil Duffy, our Director of Sustainability...
Counsel Cohen, make the recommendation right now, and then we'll go under discussion.
Yeah.
So you're recommending adoption?
I recommend adoption.
Okay, okay. Apologies, under discussion.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm just going to continue. So Neil Duffy, our Director of Sustainability, Resiliency, presented as he did in November, and was joined by Michael Rossi, a code consultant from PSD, and Dylan Patel of D O E R, and Vula Ofanis, our Building Commissioner. All counselors asked questions, and hopefully all concerns were answered. The specialized code is for new construction only, encourages electrification. It's imperative as our built environment accounts for over 50% of our greenhouse gas emissions just in Salem. Department of Energy Resources has a new designation, just like Green Communities, which we're one of, and that's a climate leader. And adopting the code is a criteria to be considered. Climate leader communities will be eligible for funding for resiliency and sustainability projects, which we obviously need. The code will be effective July 1, when the stretch code enhancements kick in. And Mr. Duffy has committed to trainings for inspectors and contractors as he did in the fall. We'll be the first community in the North Shore to adopt this. And right now, 25% of the state's population, those communities, have already adopted it. And so hope that once we adopt it, if we do, all other communities on the North Shore will as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion that we adopt the specialized code, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Communications from city officials, none. Petitions.
We petition from Comcast to install conduits on Central Street.
Hearing ordered February 11, 2024. Further petitions?
We have a petition from Comcast to install conduits on Church Street.
Hearing ordered February 11, 2024. Further petitions?
We have a petition from Centerline Communications to install telecommunication attachments in the public right-of-way of 252 Offridge Street.
Hearing ordered February 11, 2024. Further petitions?
We have a list of, a long list of public guides and taxi operators.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Murcillo moves these be granted, under discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion these be granted, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have four secondhand valuable license applications.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Murcillo moves these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have four claims.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Murcillo moves these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Murcillo's motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have one drain layer contractor operating license application from Pummel Enterprises.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counsel Murcillo moves these be granted, any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Murcillo's motion these be granted, all those in favor? All opposed? Matter carries. Any further business? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I request a moment of personal privilege.
Counsel Merkel requests a moment of personal privilege?
Thank you, President Hapworth. I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the hardship that so many of our residents and businesses faced with the devastating flooding almost two weeks ago and the extraordinary efforts and hard work by our Salem Police, our Fire Department, city workers and leadership, DPS, our leadership here in this room, and so many. I want to say thank you to all. And I also, it was so impressive watching our communities come together, the way neighbors were checking out and helping neighbors. And as we move forward, working on solutions for what we will be facing in the future with the climate crisis, it's nice to know here in Salem, we have each other's backs. And with the challenges and the willows, I know Counsel Jurslow was very busy. And yes, I just wanted to recognize that here tonight.
Counsel Merkel, any further business? Counsel Jurslow.
I'll get this. Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for a point of personal privilege.
Seeing no objection?
Thank you. On Saturday, as you all know, Saturday, January 13, the City of Salem was hit by an astronomical high tide, accompanied by a powerful storm surge, which resulted in numerous neighborhoods being severely flooded. The city's rapid response was outstanding. Many individuals collaborated to ensure the residents' safety and timely cleanup of the affected areas. And I also would like to, these individuals went above and beyond their duties. I'd like to thank Fire Chief Al Dion in the Salem Fire Department, the Salem Police Department, DPW Director Ray Joden and his staff, Haba Master Bill McHugh, City Engineer Deb Duhamel, Steve Granisi and his crew of N. Granisi and Sons, and my fellow colleagues of the Salem City Council. And lastly, Mayor Dominic Pangalo for keeping an open line of communication to ensure that all the residents received the services they needed. Going forward, I think we need to focus on infrastructure upgrades, flood protection, and hazard mitigation planning in order to ensure the safety of our community. And I want to thank everybody here for reaching out to me and everyone coming down. People came down to check on us, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further business? Counsel Proznowski.
Motion to adjourn.
Counsel Proznowski moves to adjourn. All those in favor? All opposed? We're adjourned.